All right, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
All right, I hereby call the meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Long Hill Township, regular meeting, March 21st, 2023, starting at 7:34. Call to order and statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting. Hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures, any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff, announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM in any regular or special meeting slash hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a hearing, a meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices, all in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as do not interrupt the proceeding. Pledge of allegiance, Gary, would you like to lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Aroneo is currently absent, Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Genakis?
Here.
Mr. Hain?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg is excused, Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf is excused tonight, and Chairman Correct?
Jerry just walked in, here.
Oh, Mr. Aroneo, Mr. Aroneo?
Here, thank you.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, now, we have the meeting minutes that were, that was sitting in front of you. They're pretty simple, so take a minute, just look at them. They're the meetings that not much happened on. The January 17th meeting, there's only two pages, the February 21st meeting, and the March 7th, 2023 meeting. So if you take just a second to look at them, if there's any changes or comments, please advise. I looked at them, they looked good.
My apologies, we've received, the zoning board received four new applications the end of last week, so I forgot to email you all the zoning minutes.
That's right, they, they warrant that extensive. Any comments or changes to them? Do I hear a motion to accept the January 17th, 2023 minutes?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, the November 15th ones, yeah. Do I, I'm sorry, let's go, start, cut, I missed that one. Let's, do I hear a motion to accept the November 15th, 2022 minutes? A second?
Second.
All right, I'm sorry, we, we have, what else did you say? Jerry, you were here, November 15th.
December.
I got it, thanks.
So, you want to second it?
After I read them.
Okay.
Sorry, I read the other ones, not including this, I thought this was the agenda.
Yeah, I, I mistook that, too.
I'll second the November 15th, 2022 minutes.
Okay. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And devil reflect the abstentions on all of them as appropriate.
Okay, now we're, now we're on this January 17th, 2020, 23 minutes. Do I hear a motion to accept the January 17th, 2023 minutes?
I'll move them.
Okay, Gary, you can second these.
I'll second them.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the February 21st, 2023 minutes?
Second.
Second, do I hear a second?
I'll second them.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, do I hear a motion to accept the March 7th, 2023 minutes?
Can't help you.
No, I know, Gary, you can.
Which ones are they?
The last one, it's March 7th, it's the last page. You were here.
Yeah, I see the, I don't see the date though.
It's right up top, what's that?
Oh, there, I'm looking at here, sorry. Make a motion to move, to accept them, to move them?
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, very good. Did with the minutes, good, now, the next thing we have on our agenda is the application. A bulk variance, block 12802, lot 6.05, in a zone R3, located at 141 Carlton Road, application number 22-14Z, Timothy Sophie, S-O-F-F-E-S, applicant proposes multiple storage sheds in the rear yard of a single-family residence. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have a seat.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did have an opportunity, the notice?
Yes, go ahead.
To review the notice, found the content of the notice to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, it was certified mailed on March 10th, published on March 9th, both at least 10 days prior to this evening, and, Ms. Coons, the cross-reference all the certified mail slips and advised me of same, so the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application this evening.
Thank you.
Could you swear in our experts, please?
Certainly will, I'll swear, it's just the two of you who are testifying?
Yes, sir.
As well as our board professionals, will all of you raise your right hand, please? Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
All right, now, did you guys have a chance to read our expert reports? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, you have to vote verbally say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, everything we say is being recorded, so you have to verbally say yes. The procedure is normally is we let you open with what you want, and usually you, you address some of the concerns of our experts and tell us how you are, they're gonna modify it, fix it, change it, whatever you have to do with the, with the wording of the expert report. And you can explain what you need on your property, what you want and why, so I'll let you proceed.
Excellent, thank you.
And put, if you're gonna talk, whichever one's talking be close to the mic, because you have to pick it up on them.
And even though we probably know your name and address?
Yes.
You could just give us your name and address?
Yes.
Kimberly Shelton, 141 Carlton Road, Millington, 07946.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, we, we plan to extend the rock beyond the, the border or drop of the buildings, and that was really the, the only notable adjustment. There are, there's currently an old outbuilding that we will take down, there were two previous older outbuildings that we removed from the property since we moved in.
What about the two, the two newer sheds you've built, what, what, when were they built and?
We built the two newer sheds during COVID between 19, 2020, and we'd like variance to be able to keep those two new sheds.
As opposed to one shed?
Yes.
And I also understand the size of one of the sheds is over, over the size limit, is from what I understand?
Correct.
Okay. And the information you gave us, the, um, survey, the, the two survey informations, is that an accurate representation as to where the sheds are located?
It is.
Okay. One's 18 feet and one's 22 feet, but what's the other? How, the, the bigger shed, how far is the one corner from the property line? I noticed one said 22, but what's the other corner?
We've got to look.
Measurement on that? 10, no, it says, I don't see a measurement on the one corner here.
It's 21 feet, I didn't put that on.
Oh, that's 21?
Yeah, it's farther away.
Oh, okay, all right.
The little shed's closer.
Yes, that's 18, it's supposed to be at least 10, so you're, you're?
Yes.
Both sheds are more than 10 feet away, okay.
Yes.
And you can see the property line by the trees we planted, they're dead on.
Okay.
Two feet away from our property line.
And what, what is that other shed that's there now that you're taking down? What is in that shed, what is that being used for?
The older one that's been, I didn't mean to interrupt, the older one? Some paints and lawn furniture and stuff, it's been there probably, I'd say 50 years.
Is that one, is the contents of that gonna occupy the newer sheds?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what is in both sheds, why do you need two sheds as opposed to one?
One shed, snow blower, John Deere lawnmower, weed eaters, rototiller, it's packed full.
Okay, is that the bigger or the smaller?
The small one.
Okay, and what's in the bigger one?
In the bigger one is all my tools, my four-wheeler fits in there, and other tools.
Okay.
Which I have a lot of stuff, we have nine acres.
Oh, okay.
And so I've got a, I do all the maintenance on the property.
Okay, so they're both used for somewhat lawn maintenance, but they've got different purposes?
Oh, yeah, 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 they got different, but they're full.
They're full, okay. And then they're gonna be fuller with the contents of the small shed?
Yes, and we might take some of that stuff and put in our garage, which we have a real small garage.
Okay.
So the garage, is it a one-car garage?
One car, yeah, it's.
Which doesn't, which you don't park a car in, I guess.
We can't get a car, I can get my motorcycle in there.
Okay.
How many cars do you have?
We have.
Oh, go ahead, three?
Three.
The cars are all parked outside.
Yes.
The photographs that you gave us, do they accurately depict the sheds in their present condition?
Yes.
They do.
And the one, photograph number two is, is the lot line, essentially those line of trees that we see?
It's on the other side of the trees.
Okay, but it's essentially along that line on the other side of the trees?
The trees are two feet off of our property line.
Okay.
Which I got coaxed into doing that, but anyway, we're happy with it.
By two feet, you mean two feet interior on your lot as opposed to two feet onto your neighbor's lot, correct?
I wanted to put them on the property line, and I got talked about it.
Okay, and you're talking about the trunk of the tree is two feet in, so the branches could be?
Correct.
Okay.
All of the equipment that you're storing in the shed that's for your own personal use?
Personal use.
Is that all that's being stored in the shed? Sheds or buildings, rather?
Yes.
The, what other items besides that older shed you're gonna take down, what other items you have on your property? Such as, I see there's, is that a garden?
Yeah.
Next to it?
Yes, that's a garden.
What is that little, the, the, you're planting a little square blocks of wood, you make little square vegetable areas or whatever?
Raised beds.
Raised beds, that's what I meant to say.
Epic gardeners.
Anything else on the?
More potatoes than we can eat.
Anything else on the property besides the sheds and those garden things?
There was a chicken coop, but that's no longer on the property, and then there's a little fenced-in orchard area.
Okay. When was the chicken coop taken down?
Three months, two months, but now it's completely off the property.
Okay. And the other fenced-in?
Chickens in it for a while.
Okay, the other fenced-in area is for the dogs?
That's been there like 50 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was there before you moved in?
Oh, yeah.
So two fenced-in areas, one smaller one for the dogs by the driveway, that's been there since we, before we moved in, then there's a larger fenced-in orchard area on the other side of the property, we put that in.
Do you have a copy of their reports? I didn't, I somehow made a copy and left them at work.
In your, in this report, it says the variance is required to maintain three sheds, but I think you said earlier you're taking one down, so you will have two?
Yes.
We'll have two.
Okay.
And we've already taken?
Two older ones down.
When we got there, the whole back of the yard was a dump, rolls of chain-linked fence, the two old buildings, the man was a towel man, my neighbor, he goes, I'm still mad at that old man for making it a dump back there, I cleaned it all up, it took me a year backhoe just to pull that stuff out, I couldn't get it out by hand, so anyway.
It grew in, yeah.
So?
Yes, sir.
The sheds that will remain will be conforming regarding the setbacks?
Yes.
Yes.
There's no variance needed for the setbacks, the only variance then needed is for two sheds instead of one?
And the size of each is in excess of the maximum permitted?
I think the size of one, the smaller ones.
I think both.
Both, okay.
What's, what's the size they're supposed to be?
100 square?
Yeah. Oh, I thought it was 200. When I, when I built them, my neighbor goes, 200 square feet, you can do what you want, so.
So they're both larger than necessary, do you have any plans to do anything else with your property other than have it as your primary residence? Do you plan to ever subdivide it or use it for commercially used landscaping or anything like that?
It's too wet land in the back.
Storage of like landscaping equipment or anything like that is, anything like that in your future?
Why does one of the sheds have a chimney?
I put a little potbelly stove in there for the winter, when I go in there and work on my stuff.
Oh, that's your tool shed?
Yes, sir, the bigger, the bigger one of the two.
And you also have shelves in the back for wood planks, is that useful?
Oh, in the back? For lumber and ladders and all my, all my stuff.
Now, do you notice you have downspouts coming off the gutters and the leaders are leading to the footings, is that a good idea to soak that area?
It's, it's all wet all the time, water flows through that property, and that's
But now you're making more water go to the footings of the facility.
Yeah, I could probably shoot it off a little farther.
And what, and, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what constitutes a shed and what constitutes a building? Because I know detached garages are 12 by 20, and this is 16 by 20, and that's it.
Yeah, well, this?
I know that because I've measured them out.
No, I understand, but this is not a garage.
No, it's 12 by?
No, but the size is, the size is bigger than a detached garage, yes.
We, in zoning and construction, we refer to them just simply as accessory structures, as long as they're under 20 feet in height.
Yeah.
And anything over 200 square feet of a structure requires a construction permit in addition to a zoning permit.
Thank you.
Is there electric here, it looks like there's a outlet?
On the bigger one, yes.
Can you do the construction yourself?
Yes, sir.
What are, what are the rules about barns? I mean, what if it, I know it doesn't look like a barn, but dimensions of barns are generally larger.
It's, barns, as long as the property can accommodate it and it doesn't have an issue with impervious coverage, a barn is allowed, and that's not considered, we don't consider a barn a shed.
But is this a barn or is it a shed?
It's a outbuilding for tools.
So it's a building?
Implement building is what I would call it, rather than have that stuff scattered all over my yard.
Right, oh, I understand.
With tarp.
But if it were a barn, it seems like there wouldn't be any problem.
So if there's one animal that resides, most of the day?
Not including him.
Or the dog.
Anyway, I want to word it.
Worded correctly. Did you do the engineering on this, or how did you know where to put the studs, the joists?
I've, I've been building all my life commercially.
Okay.
I built schools, banks, restaurants, multi-million dollar houses.
That's what you do?
That's what I do.
A question then?
He's retired now.
Doing this, why did you not come to the board before you built them?
I, I made a mistake, I should have, and got a permit, I didn't realize I needed to, it was so far back in there like that, I got it, I don't think nobody will say nothing. Because if you go down our street and look at all the outbuildings, mine blows them away as far as cuteness and beautiful and look good, but I don't care about everybody else, I do care.
I understand that, we just have procedures that we?
Yeah, no, 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 I made a mistake, I just wanna pay my fines, get my permits.
Are there fines? Are you here as a result of some enforcement action, not that it matters to me?
No, no, they just said, hey, do you have a permit, come see us.
Okay.
He steadied himself.
So you need to do, you're here because you wanna get a permit for what you've already done?
Yes.
Okay.
He wants to make it legal.
Yes.
So it's a, is a permit separate from?
Once we make an approval, they go get a building permit. We're just all backwards.
He needs a variance to get a permit.
Yeah.
Generally, if someone? Generally, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, generally if someone is found to have violated the zoning ordinances and does not get the requisite approval?
Then they will.
Then they will be, they will be, receive summonses and ultimately pay fines.
The first steppers are allowed to go rectify it.
So, yeah, and, and if that were, if it had already proceeded to that level, which apparently it hasn't, or that stage, then they could have obtained a stay usually by coming to the board and having the application processed and potentially approved, so that's the enforcement mechanisms.
Thank you. Are those spruce trees that you planted there, you mentioned that before, but I don't think I observed?
Yes, they're spruce.
Spruce trees, now, did you plant those with the intention of screening the sheds that you built there from your neighbors and anybody else?
Yes.
Or screening anything, correct?
Anything, I mean, we both agreed, my neighbor come to, comes to me and says, hey, we're not getting any younger, we're gonna get tired of looking at each other, let's plant some trees. I go to Clinton, three trips, handpicked these trees, then we agreed together, we get a backhoe operator in there, and we get the property line established, which I did, I, I paid for it, and then we planted the trees, and they're supposed to be planted 20 feet apart, we planted them 10 feet apart till we get back near the buildings, and then we planted them eight feet apart, and these trees get as big as this room.
So they'll be pretty tight?
Oh, they're tight, if you look at number three, you're standing at the building looking towards the neighbor's house.
And if I may, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, the photographs were submitted more than 10 days in advance of this evening, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't need to be marked as exhibits, and you did say they were accurate depictions of what presently exists, but just for the record, who took them and approximately when?
I took these, I would say?
I think they're on there, 12?
1220, 12, 1222.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Those three, and then you go to four, and you can even see a little better shot, and then you can see the other building that's been way up there, it's coming down, and then you go on the five, he's still, it walks him, and I don't mind planting more shrubbery if it makes somebody happy.
Do you have any, our experts, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I think we've covered everything, and, you know, for the board's understanding the additional stone, that'll balance off the lock coverage calculation, having to be addressed.
Okay.
So it won't, it won't require, you know, recording down lock coverage, it'll be easy for it.
Okay. Well, I would assume that nine acres is pretty big, so.
Pretty big, right, yeah.
I mean, he's not gonna have ground, he's not gonna have impervious, impervious coverage for all of them.
It's hard to take care of nine acres.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Joe, do you wanna just confirm that the, the items that you requested per your February 17 memo were, are stipulated to?
Yeah, going through items in section two, and then we come into section three, and these were suggested, testing.
Did you say they were more than seven feet apart, I think, or?
Yes, they are.
Or that they are, I'm sorry, that they're seven feet apart?
Yeah.
Okay.
And 10, at least more than 10 feet off the line.
At least, and, okay, so we're covered there, and the concrete blocks are covered, and the buffer, I guess, was testified to, and, I guess, there'll be a condition of approval as to stormwater runoff?
Uh, yeah, we can make a, a safe visit, it looks like there was, there was no grading improvements?
No grading.
Property and the adjacent property, just the planting of the trees.
Because where they're at, it's hill all the way up to my neighbor's house, so water just flows right through there, so I built them on piers and water just flows beautifully through there.
Flows from, from your neighbor's property through your property?
Just everybody's.
Doesn't flow from your property off?
No, 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 it just flows right through.
To your rear, your property?
And we have a good system of the water flowing, because my neighbor, the one that doesn't like these buildings, him and I worked together over the water flow.
Okay.
We, we got underground pipes and different systems, which was created before I moved, before we moved there, and so we keep it flowing smooth, just works great, I love the water, we moved from California.
Or there's plenty of water there.
This weathered it up now, yeah, will be even more tomorrow, the, the, and you're gonna extend the crushed stone at least two feet beyond the drip?
Oh, yes, yeah.
And, Joe, do they need a, a new lock coverage plan in calculation per 2.2.4?
No, with the, my, my understanding of that requirement is with the expansion of, of the stone around the drip line, then it doesn't?
Like, doesn't, it doesn't trigger it, right?
They won't have to address it on an ASB survey.
Got it, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Help me?
Yeah.
I, I think the board has actually already asked all the questions in my letter, the one, just, just so I understand completely, in that shed number one, you have the potbelly stove and you have electricity, do you have anything else, like plumbing or anything to either shed?
No plumbing.
Okay. And I, I believe, is, is it accurate to say that? Um, and I, I believe, is, is it accurate to say that, um, for you, you think this is a better, uh, alternative that, um, to have these two sheds to accommodate your, uh-
Implement.
Your materials? Are you, um, it's, it's better that if you didn't, you would wind up storing them in your backyard?
Yes.
Okay.
There's your benefits.
So those, that's the benefits.
Oh, yes. We love a clean yard. And neighbors stop and they live over there on Dogwood where all the big mansions are. We love what you're doing. We just love it. I have a lot of friends over there now.
Especially in garden season.
When the tomatoes are ripe, right in July, they're all in there.
That's exactly when-
Oh, they all live. Make a little gravy. Not sauce, gravy. If I made a mischance, a couple of quick ones, uh, the, just so I'm clear and probably everyone else is, but the, the, you said you removed a few sheds. I see the two new buildings. Um, there's one small shed, uh, uh, referenced on the survey.
They'll be moving.
And that was one of the ones that you already removed?
No, that's kidding.
No, it's still there.
But it's going to be removed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, got that covered. Um, all right, got the benefits. Okay, nothing further.
Anything else, Liz?
I, I don't, thank you.
Well, uh, I see we have public out there. Would a member of the public like to come up and ask questions of either the applicant or our engineers?
Yes.
All right, or, or planner? Come on up. Do you, uh, do you have the mic?
Oh.
Hold on a second, we'll get you the mic. After she gets the mic, state your name, your address and- Yeah, and we'll swear you in. Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll let you comment any questions and we'll get it.
There you go.
Perfect. Um, if you could just give us your name and address and then I'll swear you in and you could both ask questions and make comments.
Yeah. Uh, Rob Chichester. I'm at one fifty-five Carlton Road in Millington.
Can you spell your last name, please?
C-H-I-C-H-E-S-T-E-R.
What, slower? C-H-I.
C-H-I Chester.
Okay, C-H-I Chester, good, great.
And if you could raise your right hand, please, do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And again, questions, comments, both?
Sure. Uh, just as an introduction, um, we bought our six acre property in nineteen ninety-four and-
Well, before you start, would you describe where your property is in relevance to their property?
Yes.
So we know where-
The adjacent property to the north.
To, it sits to the north?
Right.
Uh, it, it's to the right and you're looking at their house?
The bordering property to the north. The, if you're going down, it's downhill, but it's the northern side of the property.
Okay, all right.
The other side of the trees.
Yep.
The other side of the tree, right side.
Left.
If you're facing their house, is it the left or right side?
If you're facing their house, it's to the left.
To the left, okay. The house right to the left, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, we built our own house twenty years ago. Looked for a place with a lot of open green spaces and zoning that would keep it that way. When it came time to put up a shed, we checked the zoning laws. We put up a compliant shed of a hundred square feet or less. And it was in the character of the neighborhood, um, in terms of storage. Um, I have a hundred square foot shed and in that hundred square foot shed and one garage, I have an ATV, two ride-on mowers, a wheelbarrow, a dump trailer, all my sports equipment and everything. Does it mean that when I have to use it, sometimes I have to back one out and do the other? I do. Would I like it to be more convenient? I would. But I played the cards that were dealt to me. And with one side of a garage and one, one hundred square foot shed, I get everything in there. Based on the zoning and the proximity bordering the Great Swamp and the conservation zones, we were confident that we would never feel overbuilt. So when you take a look at right now, um, the, the general, what I'll call landscape.
And we'll mark this O one.
Just hand one to the, uh-
How many?
I'm sorry, I didn't have the order of these. I didn't expect to move it, but this, this is my yard.
If you could wait just one second.
Wait a minute, yeah.
They're all the same.
Oh, they're all the same, okay, we got it.
Before there's any more testimony, which should be in the microphone, if we could hand, no, that's okay, we can hand these out first, no problem.
Just don't talk as you're handing them out.
And, and how many, uh, ultimately, we can, okay, this is all O one. But sir, do you, do you have more pictures coming?
I do.
Okay, all right, we'll do it one at a time. How many photographs do you have altogether?
Um, I have about five.
Well, hand them all out first and then we can, uh-
Yeah, just make sure you give them to us in order of, you know, O one, O two, O three. We'll mark them accordingly.
Yeah, we're good.
This is going to be O two.
Are they on these pictures?
Okay, let me mark this O one. I'm going to mark this O two.
We're going to have to get a co-counselor. There we go.
Yeah, I mark this, I'm going to mark this.
Do you, you want to, you can mark them and then get him to make sure.
I'll get your mon, well, actually, mine I'm going to need.
I'll keep one so I can see it.
Resolution.
I'll need another set then.
All right.
Three.
And you're marking them O one through O five?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, he's marking them and I'm marking them too.
We'll give you the chairs first when it goes out.
Yeah.
And I'll keep these though.
Ours?
And these will be all the exhibits, the five?
Is there any other exhibits besides these photographs?
No, only, only, only photographs.
Okay.
Only the five, okay.
You got one more?
Oh, that's clear.
O five? I see something else. There's more coming? Okay, ha, ha, after, after the five, what else do we have? Two more?
They have seven photographs.
Yeah, it's in a ro, a robust objector's case. O six coming? Chris, you got everything?
Yeah, one of them has it down.
I don't know how you do it without writing, but all right.
Seven, seven photographs?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm tracking.
Why don't you give her yours?
Okay, so-
I need them for the file.
Yeah.
For the file, you're good.
Looking at number one, uh-
Just see, uh, O one, each one, you just have to let us know. I know they're not all photographs. Who took them, when and whether they're an accurate depiction of what presently exists?
Just tell us.
All of these were taken right before the meeting that had been canceled, so they were taken, I would say, uh, two days before the original meeting date, which was February twenty-first.
February twenty. February twenty-three, you took them all?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And are they all accurate depictions of what presently exists?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and I think one might be a Google, but okay.
Yes, okay.
Can I ask a quick question before we get into the description of these, just to, just to go back in time for a moment, uh, just to baseline this? The shed that you have on your property, uh, you built with a building permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I, actually, I came in and they told me what was required because mine's a little prefab shed.
Yeah.
So I didn't need the-
Oh, is yours that plastic prefab?
It is, it's a plastic prefab.
I was trying to figure out where that was, okay.
Correct.
So they told you that you didn't need a building permit, but thanks for coming in?
Yeah.
Okay, and just to clarify, when he was building these, which look a little bit bigger than the plastic shed, um, you were somewhat involved? You knew, you were aware they were being built?
Uh, I was not involved at all.
You were aware they were being- Right, you, you were aware they were being built. I mean, you could see them from your yard, right?
One of them was, um, one of them was being built and then the other one was actually built while we were on vacation and we came back and it was up.
Okay.
But, let, let him continue and then we'll ask him. That way, uh-
Well, we're going to get into the-
Cause he might have already, he might already answered half the stuff you're asking him.
Okay.
So if you want to tell us something, you're going to go with each picture and tell us what depicts.
The first picture just, again, depicts our job, our, our lot, rather.
Okay.
Um, it's, you know, wide open green space, a small shed and, uh, a small garden.
Picture number two is our view of the property to the north. Again, um-
Can you hold up the one that you're from? Thank you.
Yes.
I'll do this if it helps.
Okay.
So view to the property to the north, again, wide open green space. Uh, picture number three is actually-
O three, go ahead.
Is actually the applicant's view of their neighbor to the south. Again, wide open green space.
Trees.
The Google Earth is what the original property looked at when it complied with all of the zoning ordinances of the one single shed. And, uh, you can see the balance of the backyard is the, the wide open space.
In, in number four, where is your property in relation to, uh, where the shed is shown there?
Uh, in number four, where is the relationship?
Where's your property?
Where is your property?
Is it the top of the picture?
Uh, top of the picture.
Top of the picture.
Yes.
Kind of like that from the, I guess.
Yeah.
Do you know approximately what year is depicted in this Google picture?
Uh, that would be probably around two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. So just for clarity, the line of, uh, trees that Mr. Soffis references, there was a line of fifty to sixty foot high spruce trees that separated, uh, my house from, uh, the current property. There's an old German couple that, um, lived there, um, wonderful people and unfortunately during Herc and Sandy, they toppled right down actually. So when these guys said, well, then, I came and I said, look, there's a beautiful tree line here. I said, you know, when you're ready, um, I'll pay for half the cost of replacing the trees. They had some environmental issues where they had to have a use and occupancy agreement with the house and several times he had told me, well, we don't really own the house yet, but once we do, we'll, we'll move on those trees. Eventually, uh, we replaced the tree line. I paid for half the cost of the trees, half the labor. I selected the contract there. I actually selected the grower.
Could you talk into the mic?
Oh, I selected the grower. Uh, they went down and they selected the trees. Uh, we planted the trees. Um, subsequent to next season, some of the trees were, uh, were sick. Uh, Mr. Soffis said to me, um, I really don't get involved in that, you know, you need to address it. I interviewed two arborists. I had them come out, do a treatment plan. And subsequent to that, last summer, um, when things were very, very dry, because we had an agreement that we would each water half the trees, I came to Mr. Soffis and I said, you know, those trees need to be watered. And his comment was, I'm out of the watering business and I had to water the trees myself. Um, so that just gives you kind of a, a, a clear-
Are you talking about trees that are on his property, your property, where?
They're on his property, but I paid for half of them. I paid for half of them and I did, I did half the labor.
Okay. And those are the line of trees that we see in these other photographs that the applicant put in?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
So if you look at the next photo, the next photo is-
That's, um, O five?
Right. The next photo is, is the view from our house.
Um, bear with me.
Yes.
We may, uh, have a different O five than the one you're showing.
No, that's the same one.
Is, is that what you're showing?
Yeah, that's- No.
No, it's not.
No.
I'm wrong sometimes. Only, only one I think I'm right.
No, O five, O five is that one, right.
The O five is the close up.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, you gave us this one is O five. Uh, those of us who were keeping track probably put O five, so you may want to switch them.
Yeah.
This is the one you mar, you, you gave us is O five.
So this is O five.
I'll be wrong eventually, but just not yet.
These are the two large-
Into the mic, into the mic. You want to pick the mic up, that's fine.
These are the two large, non-conforming building. These two alone are four hundred square feet of storage space when the guideline for the zoning is a hundred.
Okay, so these are the two buildings the applicant's seeking variance relief for, correct?
Correct, correct. And, you know, not only does a large building, um, tower over the tree line, but it has the extension to hold the lumber. And frankly, th- there's no way of hiding these things. So, you know, people come to our house and they're like, this, like, oh my God, like, it looks like a city over there. Because you had the original shed, you had the one that they just moved, the two sheds, at one time, there were four outbuildings that you can see. And then one back in the woods that you couldn't see. There were five outbuildings on the property. And we understand right now that the small one has been moved to a neighbor's location, but, you know, three sheds still exist and frankly, even if the one original shed, which is really a shed, is taken down. That's not going to solve the problem for us because these, they're not sheds. These are the kind of buildings you'd expect to find in an industrial park. They're gigantic. They're, they're not sheds.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, where was this photograph taken? I'm assuming on your property, correct?
Yes, this is actually from our house.
That's what I was going to ask. And your house is a-
Standing on your deck or, uh, on, at the, you gotta keep talking into the mic.
Sorry.
You want to move the mic, it's portable.
I'm sorry.
Well, we'll give it a chance.
I get it.
We're going to-
The, 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 um, where, I'm, I'm still asking the question. Where, uh, uh, how, what is the distance from your home dwelling to these sheds approximately?
I would guess probably, my, my property is two hundred feet wide. Uh, this is on the one side. It's probably, it, it, it's, it's probably a hundred feet. I mean, I, I could tell you exactly.
And you took this from your, from inside your house, outside of your house?
On the deck.
You, you can see these from any window in our house.
No, I said that, where'd you take this O five from?
Oh, uh, that was taken from, um, inside our house and one of them was taken from, uh, from outside on our-
Is O six from your, outside your house?
Uh, let's see.
I think this one was from your house.
Seems like O five would be outside and O six would be inside.
This one is closer up?
Yes, yeah, exactly. This one is-
So the distance one is from his house.
Yeah, so O six is, is the hundred footer, yeah.
Correct.
Where's the numbers?
And, and this one, oh, I guess you're probably calling O eight. This one is actually case to angle.
That's O seven.
O seven, yeah.
That's O seven.
From the, from the corner of the property line at the street. So when you're looking from the street, you currently see the, you know, the, the three buildings.
So it's your testimony, if I understand correctly, that from the street, or at least one point on the street, O seven is the view you would see if you were looking at the subject sheds, correct?
That's correct.
I see you're standing by a telephone pole for a guide, right?
Exactly.
So I see three buildings now, not two.
Correct.
I think one's coming down. One, yeah, one either has been or will be moved.
I thought that was the one in the back.
No.
I think it's this one.
This, this one's being taken down?
That makes sense. That makes sense.
The one with the little red window?
Yeah.
Like red in the window?
Yes.
That's what coming out.
That one's still on the survey.
So when I, when I take a look at the, the planning review and the comments, board must be satisfied that the granting of the variances would not cause substantial detriment to the public good, nor substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master planning and the zoning ordinance. And then I take a look at the, um, the comments from Van Cleef and Associates. Testimony shall be provided with respect to adequacy of the buffer to screen improvements from the neighbor's dwelling and yard. You see from these pictures, it'll be ten years before those trees would, would cover that one shed. Ten years.
What was the height of installation of the trees that were planted to, to screen the, uh, view from this gentleman's property to, uh, uh, the sheds?
Seven to eight.
You want me to answer that?
I, I-
Repeat the question one more time, please?
Read it back.
There's no read back.
How, how, I know, I'm joking. How, how, how tall were the trees is, when you installed them?
Um, eight to nine and a couple of them were-
Um, eight to nine and a couple of them were eleven. And these things grow.
Are, are those, are you talking about trees that are in between your sheds and his property?
Yes. They're fast growers.
And then as to four, it looks like there's quite a bit of existing tree cover between your properties that was existing beyond the, the new trees. So I'm, I'm looking at a satellite picture myself here.
Sure.
And it looks like there's a good amount of tree buffer between your properties. So how is that not...
There, there's not. What you're, what you're looking...
So for clarification, this is the house we're looking at? The Google Earth?
That's the applicant's.
That's the applicant's house.
Right. So I just wanna get clarification. So looking from this Google Earth, on this piece of paper, where would your house be? Left, top, or right side?
Left. Would it be in the left, upper left-hand corner of the picture? Is that part of your house we see a little bit of? Like right here? Is that the part of your house there?
My house would be up here.
That's what I meant.
You know, Google Earth is deceptive.
Uh, microphone, please?
Google Earth is deceptive because you never know what angle the pictures are taken at. So what, what you're seeing there right now, you're actually seeing...
So your house is not up here, it's over here?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, the house, the house is gonna be more over here.
Okay.
Again, the, the best way to, the best way to look at it...
This, this shed?
I'm sorry, ma'am, it, you're gonna have an opportunity to ask him questions.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have an opportunity to testify.
Right now, we're just listening.
The, the best way to look at it is just to look at, at these two pictures. And looking at these two pictures...
Oh, oh, those two pictures being oh what? Well...
Oh, oh-five is...
Oh-five is...
Thank you.
If, if you look at oh-five and, and you look at oh-six, you can see how little the current tree line block out those buildings.
Is there any, uh, I see the branches, obviously. It's not summer yet, although we're getting there. They, they, um, but, uh, I take it that the first few feet or so up from the bottom of the tree, there are no branches, right?
Uh, on, on some of them. You know, it, it depends. Some of them have actually, you know, started to drop down, but some of them are a little more scarce, so...
And there's some smaller trees closer or on the subject property that I see that seem to have greenery, correct, in oh-five?
And oh-six? Are you talking about, are you talking about this one?
The ones they planted, I think.
Are you talking about this one?
Well, both of them, yeah.
Both, either one.
Those are the, those are the smaller trees that were recently planted, correct?
All of these are the ones that were recently planted.
Right, right.
So this, this is the tree line in reference. So you can see, you know...
So, so, so the trees may be, uh, there for screening. Your concern is that they're not gonna be, in your opinion, sufficiently screening, uh, screening for a few years or so, correct?
They're not gonna be sufficiently screening for, for many, many years. And then if you look...
In your opinion, I understand.
Yeah. If you look at the, if you look at the close-up of oh-five, which is oh-six, you can just see how far the building towers
This is oh-five.
over, over the, over the current tree line.
About the, about the property line and where the trees were placed?
Yes.
Um, we heard earlier testimony that it was two feet on the applicant's side.
That's correct.
So you agree to that?
Yes.
Why was that done? Well, if you're gonna split the cost and split the installation, why was it on one property and not down the middle?
So the previous, the previous tree line was located four feet onto their property. And when we talked about replacing the tree line, uh, they had initially said, "We wanna put it on the tree line." I had an existing electric fence that cut right along that line. Plus, although you can't see them, I have some very, very mature, uh, tall trees in the front whose root systems went right up there and it would be a detriment to them. So we settled on, uh, two feet onto their property line and split costs.
So you were disturbing less existing trees?
Less existing trees, root systems, and, and electric fence.
So if I understand you correctly, you agreed to, uh, the cost split, the location of the trees. I take it, uh, and, uh, you said that the applicant picked out the trees, but you didn't object to the trees that the applicant picked out, correct?
No, I, I contacted the grower. Um, I selected the trees by picture. Uh, they both went down and actually tagged the ones to say they want, and no, I, I did not object to the ones we selected.
So you knew that they were the height that they were when they were planted?
Correct. That's correct. Yep.
I, I actually, I have a question for Ms. Shelton and Mr. Soffis. If, if your neighbor hadn't contacted you about planting this tree line, is that something that you were planning on doing anyway? Or were you doing that to accommodate your neighbor?
We did it to accommodate our neighbor.
Oh, that was for them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did it to accommodate our neighbor and, um, he asked us to move it two feet onto our property line as to not disturb, disturb his existing trees. So because the tree coverage was there, he wanted, he was concerned about these trees impacting.
And...
With these... Can I, can I finish? Oh, sure.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. And the trees that we planted, him and I, were exactly where Hurricane Sandy's were. Two feet off the property line. I know, I paid to have them all ground and cleaned and everything. They were never four feet. Two feet and he just demanded, "They go back exactly where they were." And we said, "No, no, 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 forever." And then finally, "Okay, we'll do it."
That, that's, that's, that's actually not...
I'm telling you, here and there, the trees are where they are.
No, no, there's not gonna be an argument.
No.
Do I, this is a year... No, 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 I understand. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. You'll be in the court.
So let me, let me then just, you know, get, get to the gist. I understand everyone likes extra storage. I'd love to have extra storage, right? You're not entitled to extra storage in a town. The zoning laws are built for a reason, right? They, they don't say that you can just build and build and build. And let's be frank here, we wouldn't even be here if, if you didn't get caught, right? You had an existing shed, you built two additional sheds, plus the, um...
Can you speak to the board though?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thank you.
Um, plus, plus the chicken coop. Plus this structure.
Well, now you're showing us another picture, so now you...
Yeah.
That's oh-eight.
That's oh-eight. This is, this is the two-story hunting structure that currently exists on their property, which he originally built on my property. And because it's deep in the woods, I don't go back there. There's a lot of overgrowth. And I heard the noise and I heard the banging. I said, "What are you doing?" He says, "Oh, I'm building a hunting structure." And I said, "Make sure you build it on your property." And sure enough, uh, eventually, and I had to go back there with, with locator software. I went back there and I found he had built a structure on my property.
Okay, well, hang on one second. Uh, oh-eight, uh, was a picture you took of the structure. You took that picture?
Yes. I, I took this picture...
And approximately, when did you take it?
Uh, right when it was built.
No, I don't know when it was built.
Uh, it's two and a half years ago. I can give you an exact date because I have it in my, in my save pics.
And, and, but the last question, the predicate question for the pictures is, does it accurately depict what presently exists? I'm gonna guess no, uh, but, or does it?
Well, it does, but not, not for the location.
Was it removed to a different location?
Correct.
Okay. But it's still there, but it's on his prop, on the subject applicant's property.
So the applicant, um, had built the structure on my property.
Right, and oh-nine you showed us. What's oh-nine?
The locator.
Oh-nine is just the, the beacon that locates the shed that shows it was on my property.
Okay, so you made a determination it was on your property line and the applicant moved it?
Not willingly.
No, we're not gonna get it to people's minds.
But it was moved.
Okay. But it was moved.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the point that I'm stressing here is not only was the shed built, and when I asked him, "Why would you, you have four hundred feet of your own property, why would you build this on my property line?"
Well, close to your property.
He said, "No, no, it was on my property."
Oh, oh, which one? That other one you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
The hunting block.
Oh, oh, I'm, I thought you were talking about the sheds, I'm sorry.
And he said, "Well, there was a row of no hunting signs and I thought that those no hunting line, uh, signs were the property line." But the kicker is, even, a- and I took him at his word and I offered to help take him down, help move it. My wife and I were leaving. I parked the car in the driveway. She goes, "Where are you going?" I said, "I, I gotta just talk about this." I went to the door and I said, "I'll help you move it." And he basically said, "I don't want anything to do with you." But the kicker is, this is the hunting structure. And a few feet from the hunting structure where the no hunting signs were listed, where he said, "This is what I thought the property line was." Fifty feet north, which if he thought the hunting signs were the property line, he knew it was my property. He cleared out a section of my property, set up a feed station for the deer, never even told me, never even asked me. And I'm like, "How can somebody do this?" So it's just, when I, when I look at these things, when I look at the sheds, sheds that were built with no permits, electricity with no permits, heat stove with no permits, um, the fence on the other side of the property with no permits, uh, in zoning violation because you know that the finished side of the fence has to face your neighbors and the finished side of the fence, um, you know, faces inwards. And just, you know, one after another. And, you know, after a while, I'm like, "Look, I get it. I get people want more storage." But, but this is not in character with the neighborhood. You know, in the zone that we live in, bordering the Great Swamp, the most pristine part of, of all New Jersey, you know, we're, we're looking at what looks like a small city here. And again, I'm all for the extra storage, but, and I would have no objection if the variance was rewritten and the additional large shed, which again is over the hundred square feet, and the original shed were kept, but that barn, because it, it's, it's not a shed, all right? That barn is just so offensive.
And by that, you're referring to the two hundred and forty square foot?
Correct, the two hundred and forty square feet.
With the, uh, uh, storage thing in the back?
The wood, the wood square?
And, and, you know, not, not only that, but when you look at that building, if you look at the picture of my shed, my, uh, shed roofline ends at the shed. If you look at the picture of the applicant's shed, the original shed that's on the property from the street, the roofline ends at the shed. If you look at these sheds, the roofline extends two feet from each one. So the shed that's said to be ten feet wide actually has a, a roofline that goes out two feet. It's fourteen feet. So it's forty percent larger than it's really stated in terms of visibility. You know, the overall, the overall roof, the overall visibility of the shed, because it's not a shed, it's a building. It's, you know, you guys are our last line of defense against these types of things and, and behavior like this. And, you know, for someone who has followed all the rules and built a ten-foot shed and followed everything else that, that the town requires. And then you look at the pictures of what we look at to the north, what they look like at to the north, what they look at to the south. And the irony that, you know, the neighbors have to look at, at, at buildings that would, would normally find in an industrial park, i- it's just not right. It's just not right.
If these, if these sheds were not as close to your property and somewhere located on another location of his property, would it be more, would it be less offensive?
I don't, you know, when, when you look at it, it can't go back because it's wetlands. So the only thing, the only place it could go would be to the, the middle of the property.
Oh.
And, and when you look...
You mean it can't go back into the wooded area because it's wetlands?
Exactly.
Could it go south? Which is on the north side of the property, correct?
It's on the north side of the property right now.
And they go to the south side of the property in the rear?
They could, they could go to the south side of the property, but, um...
The other neighbor would see?
Exactly. You're looking at the exact same situation. I mean, look...
Are you allowed to hunt on our personal properties?
That's another...
That's where you are.
Yeah.
And what you're hunting with.
Right.
So how long have those sheds been there?
No, that's, that's not our issue tonight.
Excuse me?
I was saying, how, as far as you know, how long have those sheds been there?
This rear shed, um, we were on vacation in December of nineteen ninety-one and it wasn't there.
Nineteen ninety-one?
No.
Uh, I'm sorry, God, no. Um, twenty twenty-one. We were on vacation...
Your house in nineteen ninety-one, right?
What, what, twenty twenty-one?
We were on vacation in twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And the rear shed was not there. Um, we were on vacation for ten days and we came back and it was up.
Was the...
So a couple of years, isn't that what you're saying, maybe?
Yeah.
So have you experienced any water coming from that area onto your property?
Uh, there are some, uh, channels of water that, uh, Mr., you know, Soffis has dug through the tree line. But frankly, you know, it's, it's, it's in the back and that water runoff is not a, a big concern to me.
The issue's aesthetics, correct?
The bit, the issue is the aesthetics, exactly.
Were the plantings planted before the buildings were put up or after buildings?
The...
On the property on two feet.
The plantings were put up after the barn was put up, but before the back, uh, the back one.
Other than demolition or relocating the sheds, is there anything in your mind that could remedy the situation?
I...
Additional screening or some other type of screening?
If, you know, if, again, first of all, I would absolutely have no objection to the original shed staying there. Because it's a shed. When you're looking at a shed to store paint and all that, you know, you remove it because you wanna, but it's a functional shed. All right, I look at my shed in the back, it's a hundred square feet. I got a boatload of crap in there.
We have an estimation of the size of the shed that they proposed to remove?
Uh, I think it's about one forty.
About a hundred and forty square feet?
Yeah, it's definitely bigger than a hundred.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, would you concur?
I agree with that.
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay.
So that shed in and of itself would be...
It's about fall down.
While, while it may be pre-existing, I don't know, uh, pre-existing from a, a, a zoning standpoint, in and of itself, it exceeds a hundred square foot of maximum permitted...
Correct.
Uh, uh, area for a shed.
And my, my view of that was, that was grand...
Sorry to interrupt you, but do you, do you have an answer to the question that I asked before?
He's in the process of answering.
Well, I don't know if that's what he was doing. Do you have an answer to that? Is there a remedy that you could see? Involving...
The...
Leaving the sheds there?
I, I could see, I could see a modified variance that allow the front and the back shed to remain. I don't see any remedy allowing the gigantic shed to remain. Unless it was rebuilt to be a more reasonable height. I mean, my shed, it's a hundred square feet. It's, it's like this tall, you know?
Would a larger structure that looked more like a barn be okay with you?
I, I think, you know what, there's plenty of structures, and I researched all this before I came here, where you can have large, square-footish buildings that aren't nearly this tall. And if you, you know, if you take a look at, at the, you know, at the pictures, it, it, it towers over the skyline and it's two hundred and forty square feet. So if you look at...
It's the height at the peak.
If you look at the outdoor, uh, storage, I have a hundred square feet of outdoor storage.
Maybe, maybe we could get an accurate, uh, uh, testimony, uh, of the height at the peak, roof peak of the two structures. I don't know if our engineer happens to know that or...
It says twelve on his diagram.
It, it says twelve. I, I actually think it's a, it's a little bit more, uh, probably not much, but...
But in our height on accessory structures is...
Twenty?
Twenty, okay.
Here's what I would say to you, um, and, and I say this with, with, with all due respect. I, I, I really wanna, um, I really wanna ask you, you know, if you think this is in character with the town, how would you feel if you lived here and these were built next to your house? And please don't fall into the trap of saying, "Well, they're up already, you know, let's go to the, the path of, of least resistance."
As a matter of law, if I may, Mr. Chairman,
Sure.
Uh, the board will not consider the fact that they're up already
Yes.
from both perspectives. Uh, in other words, the board will not say, "Well, uh, we might have not granted this relief had they come and asked for permission instead of forgiveness."
Right.
"But now since it's up, we feel bad about having to take them down, remove them, relocate them, what have you." The board won't do that. By the same token, uh, uh, the board won't look at it in the opposite, uh, from the opposite way uh, and say, uh, that, "Well, uh, they put it up and they didn't ask for permission first, so even though we might have otherwise granted permission, we feel like we shouldn't now because they didn't come to us first." The board's not gonna look at it either way because this is a zoning board of adjustment. The board is gonna look at it under the criteria as if they came for permission, so to speak, uh, first and decide, would they have granted it or would they not have? And if not, what would they have done?
Excellent, excellent, excellent point.
Can I ask a question about that?
Go ahead.
Would we be looking at the design of a structure or just...
Of course.
It's not there and you have to design it.
Or just lot coverage of it?
Well, we, we would be looking at diagrams. We would be looking at the, the height, the width, the width.
Exactly, but now we're, we have to judge the...
Existing ones.
Yes, so, but, um, I'm, I'm glad you said that because it's kind of like interesting. We have to pretend that they're not there.
Well...
But we wouldn't be seeing the architectural ideas of, or the roof is extended.
Would we be seeing architecture...
Would we be seeing architectural drawings of this and-
But to be, to be clear, the, the, um, uh, when I said what I said, that's essentially in, in determining whether or not to grant variance relief. As far as, so what is the variance relief here? The variance relief here is two sheds versus one.
Two oversized sheds.
And two, each sheds, each of which is in excess of the hundred square foot maximum permitted. So to the extent that you may have said, put a red roof on it instead of a blue roof on it, that probably is not a-
No, more like the, more the design.
Except there's a fourth structure that we just learned about and how does that count toward the equation?
Well, there's a, there's an existing shed and, and-
No, no, no.
No, no, the hunting-
The hunting block.
Oh, the, well, the hunting structure.
Right, so what does that count as in terms of these structures that were? And then I guess also in line with that, seems to me there's other structures, but maybe because it's just fencing, it's not considered a structure?
But there's a visual impact.
As a visual, right.
Yeah.
There's a lot of it.
It's not a structure, that's, uh, as far as I'm concerned, that's probably not a structure there.
Well, I'm asking-
But you don't need a variance to put something up like that.
Maybe Liz should answer.
Yeah.
No, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't have a very good understanding of what the hunting thing looks like.
Well, he has a picture of it.
Alright, okay, so this, based on this drawing, which are, or not drawing, sorry, this photograph. I mean, I would say, and Steve, you, you, you correct me if I'm wrong, but under the MLUO, a, a building is something that has a roof, right, and, and, and walls.
It, it, it's, it's not only a structure, I believe, under the definition, uh, uh, under municipal land use law and ultimately our professional planner will opine, uh, but if her opinion is it's a structure, I would concur. If her opinion is it's not only a structure, but it's a building, uh, because it has a roof, is that also your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, I could double check the MLUO definition.
Well, I would concur from the legal standpoint that it appears as if you're correct, that it's, it's more than just a structure, it's a building.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
What is the height of this?
Yeah, that, that we would need to know.
And, and again, you know, I, I don't, I don't want this to get more wiry than it already is and-
Possibly be more wiry than this.
I'm, I'm just interested in, in, you know, protecting somewhat of the, the quality of view that we expected when we moved in and what the, the zoning, you know, would protect.
Can I ask you a question that might help get us to somewhere and it's, and it's, uh, and, uh, it may, you know? This isn't a mediation, but oftentimes, as the board will tell you, uh, uh, there's a, all of what we do is a balance. The property rights of the subject, property owner, as well as those of the, uh, rights of the, particularly the immediately adjacent neighbors, but the neighborhood. Uh, and often there, all of zoning is a sort of a collaborative approach to some degree because even when there are approvals, there are always conditions of approval to mitigate the detriments to the surrounding neighborhood. So in that vein, you mentioned something, if I understood you correctly, so I wanted to follow up on it. I thought you said something along the lines, and I'm paraphrasing, correct me if I'm wrong, you wouldn't mind if the hundred and forty square foot smaller, already existing shed remained and the hundred and sixty, if memory serves me, square foot-
Two forty.
-proposed building were to remain, but that the two hundred and forty square foot shed, quote unquote, were not to remain. Is that an accurate, uh, uh, characterization of what you said earlier? More importantly, is that something you still are of the opinion?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I'm not gonna say anything more. Uh, the, on that one, I'll always reserve my right because everybody knows better, right? But, but that might be important for the board.
The, um, according to the survey here, Morgan survey, which-
Can I see your copy?
Sure.
Yeah, mine's worse.
But you want that, you don't want that, you want this.
Yeah, just give me that for a second, yeah. Now, as far as location of these, um, sheds, these structures, if they were moved closer to the center of the property and turned around so that you would see the front of the shed, not the rear of the shed, would that be better?
No, I, I don't see how. I mean, if anything, if they move to the center of the property and the property grades upward, every foot you move them that way makes them more visible.
Oh, okay, well, that's what I'm asking, because I, I, I went out there and looked, but I couldn't tell the, I wasn't looking at the grade. No, I was just wondering because it appears that the back has that storage area of wood, which appears to make it possibly more unsightly, so-
And if you look at oppose six, you can see the far fence that opposing-
Okay. Um, so I was just wondering if, if repositioning those sheds and turning the front toward your property would be, uh, more, a little more, uh, acceptable?
Yeah, in, in that case, no.
No, not at all?
No, because, I mean, you really wouldn't be changing anything, right?
Well, I, I, that's what I'm asking, because you wouldn't be seeing the back storage area of, of-
No, you wouldn't be seeing the back storage area, but you still see the same height, the same roof line, the same overall, you know, mass of, of the sheds themselves.
Okay, so it's the size and the, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the applicants a question?
Sure, sure.
I don't wanna assume anything, none, none of us do. The, uh, your neighbor proposed a resolution which would require this board to grant variance relief for two sheds, both of which are oversized. But in essence, if I understand, what he proposed was that you not remove the hundred and forty square foot shed that you already have and keep that one, but instead remove the two hundred and forty square foot struct, uh, uh, building. And, uh, so the question with, because no one wants to assume what your answer is, uh, is that something you would stipulate to and amend your application to seek that relief instead or no?
No.
Okay. Uh, that, that was the answer.
I just got one comment on that small building. It's about to fall down.
The small shed in the picture?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
It's about to fall down.
You mean like closer to your house?
Yes, sir. It's done.
That's when you bought the house, that, that's the shed that was there?
Yes, I think it's been there-
And you bought the house and the shed was there and you said, I wanna buy the house?
Yes.
Yep, it's also in the most visible location.
And it's close to the road.
It was moved to that location, wasn't it?
No, that's where it was.
It was always there?
Mm-hmm.
And it was there as long as you've lived there as well?
Yes, correct.
You've never had objection to that shed?
That's correct. And, and again, because it's a shed.
And now you're saying you wanna take the shed down?
I have to, yeah, it's rotten.
And it doesn't mean that a similar shed of similar height and similar quality can't replace there with, doesn't have an oversized roof line. If you look at that shed, you see that the roof line ends at the shed and it truly is a shed.
That was a, that was a very interesting point, which led to the part where I'm like, are we picking designs on sheds when we approve, if we approve something that had two sheds on it, we're not picking the designs? That's now for the construction department.
Well, we can't, no, we could, we can put restrictions on it.
Whether you weigh in after the fact or not.
But I do think we have an issue with the fact that there's this fourth building on the property and can we decide this application as it stands without addressing that?
I think you would have to grant a variance for, for them to have all the structures that they want.
Now that it's on the record, it should, should be, whether it must be or not, we can argue, but we don't need to argue. Perhaps it should be addressed.
Right. We're willing to remove that structure.
I'm sorry, the hunting structure?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So you're stip, you're stipulating to that as a condition of approval, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
No, are you-
And if there is no approval, uh, then the, you know, if that's a problem, then nature, so to speak, will take its course with respect to enforcement.
Are there any other structures on the property that haven't been disclosed here tonight?
No, I poured, I poured a little concrete footing beside the garden 'cause I was gonna buy one of these Amazon greenhouses put together so we can start our plants and go in a greenhouse. But after this started, I said, boom, there we go.
Well, that's really not a structure.
What does Mr. Chichester think of that one, Mr. Curious?
Well, do we know that that's not a structure?
Is that, that's, what is that, like a plastic thing, a glass?
It's gonna be the polycarbonate, but it's gonna have some sort of support.
Oh, okay.
It, it has a poor concrete foundation.
But I can get rid of that too.
Do you still, you have it or you just haven't built it?
I just poured a little footings.
Okay.
Say, counsel, could I ask you a question? So if, if, if a variance is approved for something like this, a nine acre piece of property, two large buildings, all its kinds of equipment, does this provide some kind of a, I don't usually precedent, but something, someone can rely upon if they come before us-
No.
-with the identical situation?
No.
The, uh, as counsel, I'll, I'll respond to the question that was addressed to me. They, 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 the, the, uh, precedent for other properties or other applications, no. The, and, and, and the, uh, the analogy I use is a snowflake, not how it's currently used by a lot of people, but, but the actual snowflake, uh, I'm told by people much smarter than me that while they all look kind of the same, they're, apparently they're all different. So it, so there's always, there's so many dynamics involved in every application, every property, every circumstance. There is no such thing as precedent per se, right, like that for other applications. However, to make clear that all the board members know, because I think all the board members know, if the variance relief is granted, it's in perpetuity, it's forever, at, for that lot, for no matter who lives there, who lives next door, what have you. If you give relief for a one sixty square footer and a two forty square footer, that property has that variance forever.
And can I comment on something that you said, which I think is applicable? When you look at these properties and, um, the applicant actually, um, not only does he own the property that's right behind his house, but he owns a property that's behind the neighboring house. So it's a L-shaped lot. And when we think about it, and this is, this is semantics, geez, you got a nine acre property, why can't you put, you know, two, three outbuildings on there? Well, the answer is, is that all of us, all of us have the same roughly cleared space back because everything else has woods and wetlands. So even though we're talking about a nine acre property for intents and purposes, we're talking about an acre and a half. Everything is clustered on that acre and a half. It's not like, oh, you got one, you know, nine hundred feet this way and seven hundred feet this way. They're all concentrated in one area, just like all of our other properties are on that street because we can only clear back to a certain area 'cause, 'cause it's wetlands, so-
Except for the fourth hunting structure, which is back there and not clustered.
Except for the-
The hunting structure that's stipulated to be removed, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know-
But you really wouldn't wanna put a, anything back that you'd have to go access all the time or, like a building because-
No, absolutely, absolutely not.
Yeah.
Absolutely not. And, and, and again, frankly, just for the record, um, removal of the hunting structure does nothing for us. You know, it's back in the woods, you know, our objection is to the large barn.
It, it's still material to the, to the board because it would require variance relief if they didn't remove it, but-
Right.
And can I clarify also for the record, just to your point, that there's electricity and, you know, various utilities that are in the sheds? If we were to grant this variance, he has to go through the permitting process, which is through the construction department and all of that has to be inspected and cleared, correct? Am I correct on that?
I think so.
Okay.
Is that a yes to our engineer?
Triggered by the two hun, well, two hundred foot shed, two hundred foot, square feet of the structure would require construction permit. So the one sixty, if it was to remain and the one forty existing don't require construction permit, the electric does require a permit.
And the electric's in the two forty anyway.
To run the, but just to leave that electric stub, um, in that location would require.
And the wood burning stove?
It's part of the two forty, so if the two forty structure stays and all of, yeah, all of that would be required.
So we don't know how that ends up with inspections, right?
But we wouldn't know whether it was granted or-
Right.
-modified or not allowed.
Right, like for example, the stove, the ventilation would go through UCC permit, compliant. So it may require modification or may, it may already be, but it would, it would trigger, it would trigger the permit process.
But the main issue here, of course, is, is whether or not to grant the variance relief sought with stipulations that were made and, and considering stipulations that weren't made.
Right, and, and again, again-
The precedent thing, excuse me, the precedent thing is still bothering me. I, I totally agree, that's the way I was taught on this board. We are not a precedent-setting board. However, having been on this board for many years, the first thing any applicant does when they come in here is they point to the non-conforming structures, uses, everything in their area. And they say, this, this guy has it, you gave it to him on this date, you know, mine's the same, give it to me, so-
Yeah, but we, just because they say that doesn't mean-
I, I agree, we can't consider it, but everyone points to the highest building and say, I want that.
Well, well, Mr. Aronia and Mr. Chairman, and I said this in a beginning, but really, really think about this. Could you imagine if every home in Long Hill decided to do this? Could you imagine what the town would look like if everyone had these outbuildings in their backyards? It, it would be insane. I mean, what, what, we border the Great Swamp. We're like, wow, this is great, you know, we found our dream property, we built our dream house. Could you imagine if everyone in the neighborhood started building structures of this size when, when the zoning says you can have one shed at a hundred square feet? I need a bigger shed, one fifty, I, one fifty, you got that. I need a little bit more, I need two shed, two sheds at a hundred. But two sheds totaling over four hundred square feet at, at these heights and sizes? I mean, the, just the, the, the appearance and, and the, the, you know, what it does to the sightlines. And again, it's, we could say, well, it's only here, but could you imagine if it wasn't only here? It, it, it's just not right. This, this is not befitting the character of the neighborhood.
Stay there for a minute, yes?
I wondered when we would be able to respond to any of the things that you said.
You will be.
Can I ask one more question of the neighbor before we go on to that? And I'm still looking for a remedy. In the past, we've, we've had more than a dispute with neighbors in our town, right? And some of the solutions have been like you've done, screening. Another one has, has been a, a two-sided fence, um, either on the middle or on one side. Would something like that, even if it exceeded our height variance of the fence, a higher than eight foot fence, which totally screened you out from, from that, and then you could do plantings on your side and they already have plantings on their side, would that remedy the situation as far as you're concerned?
I had thought about that previously. When you look at where we are and the fact that we're downhill and, and we're south, we already, for a good part of the year, have, um, very limited sunshine that comes over the horizon. Now, if we start putting up a ten or a twelve foot fence, boy, um, I, I, I can't even imagine what that would look like, um-
And whose fence would that be, Mr. Aronia?
Either or, I've seen both. I've seen it on town property, I've seen it on one side, I've seen it on the other side. You know, different solutions have worked in different-
We wouldn't want him to put them too close to those pine trees, but, you know, that, yeah, you can, but that-
So you're asking him to put a twelve foot-
Or the neighbor, he has two feet from the trees to his property line.
Well, there's, there's, there's-
You're suggesting, I'm saying that.
A two-sided fence, yeah, however it works, you know?
The tree, the trees already encroach over the, over the property line. So if, if it was a fence, it would have to be put on my property if you're talking about a, a ten to twelve foot fence.
Would that, even an eight foot fence, would that even shield, uh?
No, not at all. And, and again, if you, if you haven't in person, physically seen this, I encourage you to go out there. Because, you know, pictures don't really, don't really do it, do it justice. I mean, when you look at what my backyard looks like, what the neighbors' backyards look like, you know, people are, are entitled to green open spaces as the law allows. But I just don't understand why, and, and I know, I know we're trying to please everybody, but say the one sixty shed is okay, say the one forty shed is okay, say rebuild the one forty shed, why would you wanna encourage a situation where we're approving a two hundred and forty foot shed of this height with electricity and heat? It's just, there's, there's nothing in the zoning laws that, that even remotely, you know, allows something like that.
And again, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I understand what you're proposing, you're proposing what would still be three hundred square feet of shed and two versus one and still require variance relief, but all those sheds already exist. In essence, you're saying, remove the two hundred and forty square foot one, not the hundred and forty square foot one. correct?
Right, remove the two hundred forty square foot one, because that's the one that really towers over the landscape. The, the, the existing, existing shed that the applicant said, you know, are falling down is, you know, it, it looks like it belongs there, right? It looks like it's a shed in any other yard.
And just to get, help get this to, because at some point, we'll have to finish the hearing, the applicants have not stipulated to that.
Correct.
The board, of course, has options. The board could grant, deny with conditions. The board can grant, uh, uh, the relief you propose, even if the applicant, as, by way of imposing conditions, even if the applicant doesn't stipulate to the conditions. I'm not suggesting the board do any of the above. They, well, maybe I'm suggesting they do something, and I'm sure they will, but not any one of the above. The board will decide what is best.
She's been waiting patiently to speak.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I want to make sure we've exhausted the, the objections.
Does the two hundred and forty square feet also include the lumber enclosure with the roof?
It does not.
No, I was, no, that's, that's an additional area.
And, and again, Mr. Hane, the two hundred forty square feet is the-
Footprint.
The, the overall size of the footprint.
The footprint, just the roof and then the roof.
The roof is another two feet, so it's another four feet total.
It's the massing of the structure that you're referring to.
Correct.
I do have another question before we let him go.
Sure.
So, there, you said that there were five sheds at one point on this property with, with the prior owner? Where were-
No, not with the prior owner. Prior owner, there was only one shed.
Okay.
The, the existing shed that you see was the only shed that was on there. And then, when the applicants moved in, the first thing they built was the chicken coop. Then they built the hunting structure, then they built the barn, and then they built the, the back shed.
Okay.
So, the, the five total buildings, four of them, were built by the applicants, one was existing.
And the chicken coop, that's his shed.
Oh, that's Chi Chester's shed.
Okay. Any other questions for the object, for the witness?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, as these four additional structures were built on the building, why is the municipality only hearing from, about it today?
The, um-
I, that might have been a rhetorical question, I think.
No, was, was there any, uh-
Oh, why didn't you tell us? Okay, yeah.
You guys didn't apply for a permit, I get that part. At what point did, I mean, it wasn't, it didn't happen, you know, before the, the day before they came and put their application, it's been happening over time, so why now?
Correct. Originally, um-
December twenty-one, you said, so it was a year ago.
Right, originally, the chicken coop was located on the other side of the, um, the garden, right?
Okay.
When the big shed was built, I had concerns about it. I had gone over to speak to Mr. Soffis about his buildings, and he said, do you see a sign here that says, this is Rob's property? And I said, no, and he basically told me to mind my own business. And, you know, I was in a tough situation. Do I, you know, come and report and say, hey, look at what my neighbors are doing, and make that an even more, you know, exacerbating situation? But, you know, I mean, here we are now, and it just, it, it had to be stopped in its tracks, you know, it's, I mean, you, you were looking at a sixth building, that cement foundation, which was going to be the greenhouse, you're going to look in a situation where you had six outbuildings on his property.
Do our experts have any questions for the object? Okay.
Can I ask our experts a question?
Sure.
Regarding accessory structures, if it were not a shed, if it were a garage or a barn, and what would the size limitations be on that?
The ordinance is not very clear. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't separate it out. It talks about residential sheds, and it talks about accessory structures, but it doesn't, when it talks about residential sheds, it says a hundred square feet, but when it talks about accessory structures, the only thing is the setbacks that we discussed, and then the height of twenty feet.
So, if, if, if this were done differently back when, if they were before the board with an application originally, they might have built a detached garage.
Correct, right.
And built it according to our, our ordinance, and it might be a successful application without neighborly objection.
Correct.
Would, would the setback be the same?
Um, the setback, yes, it would be for an accessory structure. If it was attached to the principal structure, they would have to have a setback of at least twenty-five feet.
I guess I would imagine there'd be, have to be a driveway that led to the detached garage for the vehicle to enter and exit the detached garage.
So, that, that would have, and some of those questions we're asked tonight would have been the context of that building, say it was a, like, five hundred square foot detached garage, we would have been discussing the access to it, viability of using it as a garage, we would have been discussing the electric, the heat, whether or not plumbing was in it, so that it might be constituted in some fashion as an apartment or any other principal structure on, as not an accessory. Right, and my opinion is, is, for what it's worth, is it also might have been built in a different way, giving it more, we'll call it curb appeal or neighborly appeal, than a collection of different sized sheds.
Special oversight.
What about, like, people, I've seen pole barns, you know, like, uh, one pole barn that's not exactly a garage, but, right, yeah, but, you know, pole barns with, that you wouldn't need access for a car, because you're not putting a car in it. How would that be treated as opposed to a shed?
What's strange is it's only discussed in our ordinance if it's kept for equine activities.
Really?
So, it's not-
Strange?
Yeah, so, it, yeah, and this has come up, actually, another time, but-
So, that ordinance should be revisited, then?
Yes.
Well, when we do our annual-
We would be willing to get a horse.
Get a horse?
When we, when we, when we, when we do our annual report, maybe we can keep track of these things, Deb, and-
So, that's be addressed.
We can make recommendations.
So, what you're saying is that it may or may not alleviate an issue if we stated one building at a certain size being a prefab or type of pole barn thing as opposed to two sheds there?
Respectfully, would have been a different-
Nothing says that you have to keep a car in a garage.
Right.
You can have a garage and keep your ATV there, right?
But if it's considered a garage, then you have to have access to, to drive a car to it, right?
You do?
Not necessarily.
Per our code, we're looking at accessory structures.
Yeah.
So, you're looking at an accessory structure that doesn't classify as an equine use on the property.
Okay.
Right, not only, yeah.
That reclassifies that and shed.
And if there is nothing else, then that brings you over to residential shed, correct?
Correct.
So, we're right back where we started from, from an order-
But if you have a garage, you can keep your boat, you can keep your tractor, you can keep your-
ATV.
But then the application, wouldn't that be as a garage, not a shed?
Correct, that's-
A detached garage.
I agree.
Detached garage would be an accessory structure in our code.
Right, so it's the same thing?
It would be an accessory structure, correct, but it would be, yes, but primarily for the purpose of storing cars, knowing that not everybody does that, yeah.
Okay.
So, we'd be looking at a different snowflake, different massing, different testimony, different application. That was hard.
I'm, I'm really just looking at the, the spirit of the zoning law and how it was written, and the intent of how it was written, and I think for the quality of residence and the quality of neighbors, that, you know, they, they frankly don't want to live next door to a multitude of buildings or, or, or large buildings, and, um-
Yeah, excuse me, I'm not trying to reclassify what they have, I'm trying to say something else, some other type of-
Yeah, we're not, we're just trying to figure out, yeah, what, what might sit there that would be more aesthetic, maybe.
Yep.
All right, um, I, I know, I know, I just want to make sure that you pretty much concluded with your testimony?
Yes, yes.
Other than your testimony, do you have any questions of our experts concerning this?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
And I, I thank you.
All right, um-
And, Mr. Chairman, before the applicants ask questions of the witness-
I know, I know.
Or make comments, yep.
Yeah.
Because we do have other-
Are there any other witnesses that want to come up and make comments or, or, or statement?
Questions?
Any other members of the public? Questions, comments? Uh, come on up, sir.
Can I go to the restroom?
Sure. In fact, let's take a five-minute break. Let's take a five-minute break, do a bathroom break, and then we'll hear from the next witness.
Okay.
All right, we're back in-
We're back in session at nine sixteen, seventeen. Now, we are hearing from another witness. Would you state your name and your address, please?
And then I'll swear here.
My name is Charles Camello, and I live next house up the hill at one fifteen Carlton Road.
Okay, and swear here.
Yep, I will do so. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and again, you could ask questions of the witnesses, excuse me, of the applicants, or make comments, or both.
And make sure you're talking into the mic, we'll make sure it's under our-
No, we were here just to state that we have direct view of the twelve-foot structure and the new shed behind it, and with unobstructed view, and we have no issues with it at all. We don't think that it's out of character. We both think that it's well-constructed.
Well, wait, you can't speak for both.
No, no.
You can only speak for yourself.
Speak for yourself.
I think that it's well-constructed. It doesn't look like it's falling down, you know, it's like, yeah, he has one other shed that looks like it's like falling down, and that was there when they moved in. We moved in, we moved in in 2016, and so the whole property was in disarray. There was an older woman that lived there, I believe she passed away, and then when they came in, they started cleaning up the property, it started looking nice, and then he ended up putting a shed in, and so we, you know, we were like, oh, well, you know, everybody has a right to have a shed, so we're like, it's no problem with that. We just didn't have any issues with it. We have like, no trees blocking or anything, we just-
You had no issues with the, when there were five or six structures?
There is five or six structures.
Yeah, there were, well, there's three sheds currently, correct?
Currently, there's three sheds, yes.
Okay, and then there's a hunting structure, are you familiar with that? That was-
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
You use that structure?
But that's, you know-
You use that structure?
Do I use it?
Yeah, do you hunt?
Yeah, I hunt, yes.
Okay, do you use that structure?
No, but I can see it. Went them all the way in the back of my property.
Can I make a correction to-
I'm sorry, no, you'll be, but you will, the chair will give you a chance to speak as well, and the- And do you have any knowledge with respect to the structural integrity of the shed, the smaller shed of the three sheds, the hundred-and-forty-square-foot shed?
I know it's probably at least fifty years old. It's, the roof is starting to leak, it's, and there's rot on the ceiling, and it looks like it's starting to cave in, the siding, the siding has fallen off a little bit, and you can see that directly from the road, it doesn't look very well, you know, it doesn't look good at all.
In your opinion, could it be renovated or repaired?
I would say be torn down, I don't think it was built correctly. It's just sitting on a couple of cinder blocks, the floor's got some rot to it.
So by the time you repaired it, you'd be building a new shed?
Right, you might as well rebuild the whole new shed.
And if another shed was rebuilt in that same location, would you have an objection to it?
I would say yes, because it's visible from the road, and so whenever you walk down the road, you would see it, where the two other structures are way in the back, and the only time we see it is, you know, you can't see them when you drive down the road, but you can see them looking out our window.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
Any questions for our professionals?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I correct?
Yes, okay, Mr. Chichester, you're still under oath.
Yes, commenter mentioned that he's in the next house up, he's not in the next house up, he's two houses up. The property is two-hundred-and-ten feet wide, plus the property of the next house, so he's over four-hundred feet away, over four-hundred feet, totally different than us, which is about a hundred feet away, and again, in the interest of full transparency, these guys are fishing and hunting buddies.
Okay.
They drive their ATVs to each other's houses, so, you know, I'm not really thinking-
Talk into the mic.
I'm not really thinking that you're getting the clearest representation of what you see in those sheds.
That's fine, I mean, thank you for the clarification of the distance, but his testimony is what it is, and-
I'm sorry, could I make-
Sure, sure, just one second, so, are there any other public member that wants to speak? I know, okay. Come on up, but this is gonna be, I'm gonna put an end to it.
Yeah, this is only with respect to the testimony you just heard from Mr. Chichester, which really was how far your house is.
Right, is there any-
If that was wrong, and you believe it, further or closer, you could tell the point.
Incorrect information, our house is two-hundred feet from their property.
Okay, but it is the two houses up, it's not the house right next to us?
No, we are, we are, our property borders their property, there's a house in between us, his lot is L-shaped.
Right.
And we are the next lot over.
Right, so you're the next house up, even though your backyard borders his property, because it's an L.
Right, correct. Our backyards border each other.
And your, your address, well, you said one fif-
One fifteen.
And then there's a house in between, and then-
House in between.
Okay.
That's fine.
That clarifies it, and that it's, the distance is the distance, but that clarifies where your house is, okay, thank you. Okay, now, no other members in the public, I'm gonna close it to the public for questions, and maybe not comments, because we can still take those. Okay, now, the applicants have heard the testimony of, I'll say, the witness objector, you've heard the, our experts testify as to what they consider the law, the planning and the engineering aspect of it. What would you like to state in response to that?
By way of rebuttal to the-
Yeah, rebuttal to the objectives.
I'm not sure I can actually remember everything that was said, because it has been quite some time, but the two sheds, the larger sheds that are set back at the property, are in the place where we can create the most visibility screen by putting the trees there, they're also set back. Rob's house is adjacent to us and screened by the trees. Also, as those trees grow, he won't be able to see them. The house that's higher has complete visibility, and there will never be any screening, so-
I'm sorry, whose house is higher? You're talking about Mr. Camello's?
Mr. Camello's house. So Mr. Camello's house, because of the grading, Rob sits below us, our house, and then the Camello house, so they have full visibility into the yard. In our neighborhood, there are many barns, sheds, animal buildings, outbuildings throughout the community. It's not unusual. Charlie's property has an old barn on the back end of it, the neighbor just next to him has another one, as you drive up and down our street, as I know you have, you'll see these type of outbuildings, most of them are not as well-constructed, not as visually appealing, and in different states of disrepair. If we would be able to have a barn on our property, we would like to apply to have that larger structure be a barn, or a garage of some sort, because he is very handy, and he works around our house, he maintains our house-
You mean your husband?
My husband.
Okay.
So he has more tools than the average homeowner, he has table saws, and he does a tremendous amount of work around the house, in the house, around, as you can see, he can build probably too many structures. So we'd like to be able to keep that large workshop, and would like your guidance on what the best path is for us, to keep it and to maintain it in a way that is within the city's guidelines.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a legal issue there.
Sure, go ahead.
All the board can do is decide the application before it.
Yeah.
So the board can't guide you as to what to maybe do differently, or tomorrow, or what happened. The board can decide the application. Board has some leeway, as I mentioned, they could grant, they could deny, they could grant with conditions, some of those conditions you may not even stipulate to, so you might end up with a relief that you don't want, you know, or grant the, all these are possibilities. So to answer the legal question, I did have just two questions of-
Go ahead.
The applicant, based on the additional testimony, the- You're retired from the construction business, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, any of those tools and all of those, any of those tools that, and equipment that you store at your home would only be utilized for your own personal residence, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you wouldn't be using them on any other jobs, correct? Okay. And, ma'am, the, you testified, correct me if I'm wrong, that Charlie's house, one fifteen Carlton Road, the, has an unobstructed view of the two sheds, correct? And Charlie testified as to what his opinion is. The variance relief, you understand, if it's granted, it would, those sheds could be there in perpetuity, forever, no matter who lives in Charlie's house, whenever they live in Charlie's house, you understand that, correct?
I do.
Okay, it may have a different opinion. The, the, but it's, they, that home has an unobstructed view, as it presently is, of the two sheds that are currently there.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
As in full transparency, does the house next to us. And a number of the members have been out, seen the property, we provided pictures, we are trying to be-
And just by the next, I'm sorry, because only, because not everybody's gonna know from the rest, the next house being, do you have a block lot, address, or?
It's one twenty-five, one twenty-five Carlton Road.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I interrupted.
So can I ask a clarifying point on the application? So, we're talking about the number of buildings only because the application is framed as two storage sheds, is that correct?
Yes, the ordinance-
Number and size.
Sorry, you have the two sheds, and you're only permitted one.
Right, so that-
And the size issue.
Well, but that's separate, that's a separate variance. So if the application, I don't know if the application can be amended, or how that works, but if the application were amended to be one storage shed and one other accessory structure, whatever it would fall into, that number variance would be eliminated, is that correct?
Correct, if it's two sheds, right, but if it's, let's say, a detached garage and a shed, that's permitted.
Okay.
You still have the size issue.
You still have the size issue, correct?
Right, so then, on the size, for an accessory structure, other than a twenty-foot height, is there any size limitation?
No.
So technically, if this application were to be amended, and the plans redone to fit a detached garage and a shed, we could technically be only looking at a variance for size.
Well, to be clear, I'm sorry, but to be clear, I, if you're asking our board professionals whether this, what's, what exists, or one of the sheds that exists could constitute a detached garage, I don't know what the answer would be.
What we're not looking at would exist, we're looking at what could exist, right?
Oh, well, in that case.
Yeah.
The way, the way-
But that's not the app, yeah.
The way garage is defined in the ordinance, it is primarily for the storage of cars.
Or vehicles, right, so is in-
Well, is it vehicles, or car, might be motor vehicles.
I think it's, I think it's all-ruv vehicles, for a garage.
Okay.
Motor vehicles.
Motor vehicles?
Could be a tractor, or-
A motorcycle.
An excavator.
I think also it's important for the board to consider the intent when it interprets the ordinances, or when it interprets the ordinances in a way that might lead people to potentially circumvent the intent of the ordinances. I think the board needs to be careful about that.
Well, there would be different testimonial-
Where I'm going, the reason why I'm saying garage or barn, I'm not talking about reclassifying the existing structures, I'm talking about rebuilding something that is amenable to the neighbors, and is, you know, would constitute whatever you said, whatever constitutes a garage, I mean, whatever that is, or a barn, or something else, maybe it's not in his direct view, because there would be a different application, and in that application, we talk about placement and screening and everything else. That's what I was talking about, I'm not trying to say that the shed's a garage.
Agree, yeah.
Do you have any other testimony? Or witnesses, or anything?
No, go ahead.
The gear structure I built, and our lots don't come in like this, they come in like that, and I didn't quite know it, and so when I built the structure back in the woods, I went over to my neighbor, and I said, hey, I think I made a mistake, I think it's on your property, or it's close to the line, and he confirmed it. I go, dude, let me just boat hunt there this year, and then I'll move it. Nope, he come on, it's gotta go, it's gotta go.
Well, you've already agreed to move it, to eliminate it, right?
That might not be material at this stage.
Yeah, it's really not a material.
No, anyway, I moved it.
Yeah, that's fine.
And now, if you don't like it, I can tear that one down, I can tear the front one down, now all we're gonna have is those two structures.
Well, you've already stated you're gonna tear the one that's falling down, you already stated you're gonna remove the hunting structure.
And you're not gonna build anything more, including on the footings.
Right.
Correct.
And we got rid of the chicken coop.
Okay, so now we're talking about the two sheds that are already there.
Two shed.
The large one and the not-so-large one.
Yes.
That's basically what I'm assuming we were discussing.
Yes.
Is there anything you wanna talk about those sheds that address anything that has been said by the board, or the applicant, or the objector, or anybody else?
Yep, they are in the character of the neighborhood, they are of good construction and are visibly appealing, we're willing to take down the wood holding area that's on the back, if that's seen as an eyesore, we're also willing to plant additional trees to provide additional screening.
Like another row of trees inside the ones that are already there?
Correct.
And would that be subject to the review and approval of the board planner for purposes of specifically screening the view of the sheds? I guess they can't be screened from one fifteen Carlton Road, based on your testimony, but perhaps they can be better screened from, I don't have the address.
One fifty-five.
One fifty-five, one fifty-five Carlton Road.
Can I?
And while we were characterized as not wanting to work together, we are, we have demonstrated that by the planting of the trees, and we'd like to move forward with a way that helps to screen those buildings, so that our neighbor at one fifty-five is at least appeased.
And then one other thing, can I speak?
Sure, I'm asking you to, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
You have to ask your wife that.
I would say I would ask.
When we planted the trees, you could stand in between them, and they were that far apart, over one year, they grew two feet, next year, it's gonna be solid.
Well, let's us all recognize that everyone who testified this evening, notwithstanding the fact that I'm sure they're all experts in many things, none of them have provided expert testimony, everyone has provided fact testimony.
Yes, I'm just saying what I saw over last summer.
All right, so that's your observation?
Yes. And I watered-
In a second.
I watered them, fertilized them, I emptied my pond, I got enough hose, we got thirty trees, I do the first fifteen, boom, 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 and then one day, when he pissed me off, I said, I'm out of the tree business with you. That's the way that-
Well, you do understand that whatever we decide today, whether it be, whatever the decision is, if you are made to plant more trees, you have to keep those trees alive.
Oh, I know that.
They're on your property. I, no, I understand, I'm just saying there can't be an attitude issue here, there's gotta be, that you keep those trees planted and alive.
Well, I think he's apologizing because he did have an attitude, he's admitting he had an attitude.
Yeah, I understand.
But the trees have been kept alive, when there was a drought, we drained our pond to try to reduce the amount of watering Rob had to do, he asked us to do that, and we did it, because we do have a pond that fills.
I've got twenty thousand dollars in the trees, and cleaning up between the neighbors and us, twenty grand right now.
All right, well, you know, that's really not the issue, the issue is the sheds and the screening and the aesthetics.
I think one of the applicants understands the issue.
Yeah.
On the, on the larger shed, how high above the roof line does the chimney extend? How tall is that?
I'd say maybe a foot.
So not significant?
Oh, nothing, it's almost level, because the thing is, two feet above, ten feet away, or two feet above ridge, when you're installing a shaft like that, a chimney.
In the interest of time, but let me just sum up what you're saying, you're gonna take away the hunting stand, you're going to eliminate the shed that is dilapidated and falling down, the one that's closer to the house, you agree that you would get rid of the storage of lumber behind that bigger shed, correct? Okay, you're gonna plant another row of trees inside the row that is already there, in between the gaps? You would do, you would be agreeable to that, okay? I'm just summing up what you're agreeable to, you know, this is not stating that the, any of my board members would agree or not agree, or vote yes or no, but I'm just summing up what you're saying. So, with that said, that's what you're proposing, to be allowed to keep these two sheds?
Yes.
All right, so for the sake of time here, I'm gonna allow Mr. Chichester a closing statement in his objection, and then we will deliberate.
And, Mr. Chairman, with, perhaps it would be a surrebuttal, just simply based on the additional testimony that was just provided.
Right, what they just agreed to, and how you believe that might impact you.
Well, and also, if you disagree with anything they testified to this second time around, but it's gotta be relatively brief.
Absolutely. The reason for my concern is, about a year and a half ago, one of the trees in the back that shields the back shed died, and Mr. Soffis came to me and said, oh, I killed the tree, I had a big pile of manure right next to the tree, and it drained right into the root system, and it's the only tree that died, but it's dead, 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 a year and a half ago, it still hasn't been replaced. So the fact of, we're saying here now, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of the trees, and we're gonna make sure everything is good.
Any conditions of approval, there's, there are enforcement mechanisms.
Yeah, anything that we, that we provide, put conditions on, whatever decision we make, those conditions must be followed, and there are mechanisms in the town to follow up on those, to make sure that if there's a dead tree, it's gotta be replaced, if there's the trees that have to be maintained. You know, I understand what you're saying, and that's, that's a concern of the board, we hope that our fellow, our people that are in the township follow up with that, but as a board, we don't personally do that.
Yeah, I, I understand, you know, all we're looking are quality of life issues, property value issues, being shielded from the large structures, and I know you said, you know, we keep our, our property pristine, I mean-
Wait, wait, no, it's gotta be to the board, Mr. Sir.
To the board, talk to us, talk to us.
Gotta be to the board.
I'm saying, if it's in- I'm saying, if, if it's enacted, it needs to be followed.
Is that, is that one of the exhibits, or is that a different, new picture?
No, it's a new picture. It's.
No, okay.
It's not worth discussing. If it's enacted.
You're free to, to submit further evidence.
No, that's.
If you wish to do.
That, that's fine. I mean, as, as you can tell, we have a contentious relationship, which started with the building of the hunting structure on my property. And my concern is that anything that's enacted is going to, you know, wane or, you know, not be followed through.
I understand.
And, and again, everything we're talking about here are, are violations. We don't have any violations on our property. We've followed everything. So it kinda, it's, it's distressing to me that I'm here having to fight for our rights when we're the ones who have followed all the rules.
Understood. And now, please, please know that, as the board knows, that the applicant has the burden of proof. Why people, while people have a right to ask for variance relief, and that's why this board exists, and these board members are volunteers, they spend a lot of time and effort doing this, so they should be applauded. The, the, while every property owner, including yourself, has the right to ask for variance relief, that is a variance. That is by law a deviation from what is allowed. So the applicants, just like any other applicants, have the burden of proof. They have to prove certain criteria.
And can I ask you a process question, then? Is, is the way forward now that you convene, you come back, you?
No, we don't come back. We do it in public. We deliberate in public, we vote in public.
Open public media. But they'll deliberate and they'll vote. They'll either grant the application with conditions.
Is it right now, or?
Yes.
Right now.
Grant, grant the application with conditions, deny the application. There's no conditions if it's a denial, right? They, or, and those conditions may be things that were stipulated to, one or more may be things that weren't. They may be imposed by the board. So we, we don't know what the board's gonna do until the board does it. Majority of the board, we have six, so the applicant would have to have four in favor of granting with whatever the conditions are. That's how it works. And the criteria, as the board will tell you, there's C1 and C2 variance criteria. They're set forth in our board planner's memo on page three on the top. And I'll be going over them either now or before the board deliberates, just so everybody understands what burden the applicants have to prove, what they, criteria they have to have satisfied the board in order to get the relief.
And I'd like to add, anything the public says, we weigh very heavily, we consider, and we take into consideration, along with their testimony, along with their burden, we put it together and we make a decision. It helps that people come either in favor or against it, because we hear things that we don't know, that we, we find out. And, you know, it doesn't, the, the burden of proof is still on the applicant. Your testimony just gives us additional information, it gives us a different viewpoint, and we consider that. So, thank you.
All right. No, I, I appreciate it. I just really wanted to give you the perspective of me and my wife, who've lived there for 28 years, and the impact that these structures have on us, and just to voice our objections.
Thank you, thank you. We, we do encourage the public to come talk to us. Would you state what the burden is?
Sure. And we've closed the hearing, as I understand.
Yes, we are closing the hearing, yes.
And this is just by way of refresher for the board, because the board members know that these are bulk variances that are being sought by the applicants for, as we've discussed, two sheds versus one, which is in violation of the ordinance, as well as two other deviations. Each shed is in excess of 100 square feet. One is 240 square feet, one is 160 square feet. There are two ways, as the board knows, to prove an entitlement to a bulk variance. One is called the C1 criteria. That is an undue hardship criteria, and the hardship has to result from topographical conditions of the land, or a structure that is lawfully on the land. I suspect that that's not the primary, if at all, the basis which the applicants are seeking that relief, but probably under the alternative basis for bulk variance relief, for C variance relief. C2 is the statutory provision. And there, and I'm paraphrasing, the applicants would have to have proven to the board members that, one, on the positive criteria, that the applicants have demonstrated that at least one of the purposes of the municipal land use law have been satisfied, and they are set forth in section two, a non-exhaustive list of the MLUL. And the second part of the positive criteria that you will have had to have established to the board is that the benefits, from a public standpoint, not personal benefits, but public benefits, of the proposal substantially outweigh, that's the language, substantially outweigh the detriments from the proposal. Because by definition, any deviation from the ordinance has some detriment, because the ordinance is established for a purpose, and if there's a deviation, by definition, there's a detriment. So you would have to have proven the positive criteria, both that one or more of the purposes of the municipal land use law were advanced by this proposal, even though it's a sort of an after-the-fact proposal, and, and that the benefits from this proposal substantially outweigh the detriments associated therewith. That's a positive criteria. And you also have to prove the negative criteria. A lot of people say, why, you know, prove a negative. There, there's a store, right, where, how do you prove a negative? But you, you have to prove two negatives. The first prong of the negative criteria, you have to establish no substantial detriment to the public good. What does that mean? It generally means that what you are proposing is not substantially out of character with the neighborhood. The second part of the negative criteria that you have to prove is no substantial impairment of the zone plan, master plan, or the zoning ordinance. And what that means essentially is that what you're, you have to prove that what you're proposing doesn't constitute rezoning. It doesn't rise to the level of rezoning of your lot. You know, such a deviation that is so out of the norm that it constitutes rezoning. Why? Because as this board will tell you, that's not their job. In fact, the law tells them they can't do that. That's why the second prong of the negative criteria is no substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Why? Because the governing body does that. They regulate and zone by ordinance, not by variance. So those are the standards of proof that the, all applicants have to demonstrate under C2 to this board whether or not those applicants, in this case you, are entitled to the bulk variance relief that you seek. And in doing so, the board does consider conditions which could help mitigate the detriments and in the balance, perhaps, result in a grant. Those conditions may be stipulated to, and the chairman did a better job than I could do of reiterating those stipulations moments ago. And there may be other stipulations in addition to, or instead of, that the board, excuse me, conditions that the board may impose by way of that relief. So while I've complicated the matter all the more, made it no easier for the board, that's why they should be applauded, because they not only do all this hard work, but they're hard, hard, difficult decisions to make under the criteria. But that's why we have these hearings. In open public meet, you know, at, open meeting, Open Public Meetings Act, they're in open, everybody has a chance, due process, under the state and federal constitution to present their sides and to provide their testimony. And this board, as jurors or judges, both, they ultimately, in a quasi judicial fashion, render their determination. And they do it all on a volunteer basis. So, here, here.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I, I think that helped because it put in context the, what we have, the facts that we have to apply to the law. So that, that was a helpful explanation. I know that we have a newer member, but I think you, you sat on the, one of the boards already, right, since?
I'm just watching. This is my first time.
Right, I'm, oh, actually, I, I forgot, that's true.
That's okay.
But, anyway, it does help, because it helps put it in the context, and the public understands what we have to apply.
And all the board members by law take a certification course.
But at any rate, now that we've heard all the testimony, and we've heard the legal standard that we have to meet, it's time to deliberate. And I would start with Scott. Why don't you start?
I appreciate both sides, both of your concerns and wants. I have a couple of concerns myself, which I'll keep to myself, but, on certain things. My problem I have is, I'm looking at the main structure, which is no longer a shed. It's got heating, it's got electricity.
It has a potbelly still.
It's still heating.
Yes.
It's not a shed.
Uh, excuse me, there's no give or take here. Let him talk.
It's not to keep your tractors warm.
No, no.
To me, that's not a shed. These were built without coming forth to the board.
Correct.
I understand Mr. Chichester's concerns. They're on his side of the property line, where the other gentleman, it's two houses away. He's still seeing it, but it is still far away. It's not on top of his property. I do not see a real problem with the smaller one. I know you're taking down the dilapidated one. I'm talking about the structure that you built. I do see a problem with the bigger structure. For that, I, I do not agree with it.
So what are you saying?
The larger structure, I do not agree.
Okay, but you would agree to the smaller one?
Not the dilapidated one, but the.
But, yeah, the dilapidated one was dying.
The, the one further to the rear.
Yeah, okay. All right. Jerry?
Well, when I arrived seven minutes late for the meeting tonight, I thought it was gonna be a quick, a quick meeting. We'd be out of here by eight o'clock. I really did. It seemed like there was no objection and uneventful, and we were approving a shed that maybe was non-conforming in several different ways, or two sheds. Things unfolded a different way. And some of the things I consider, strongly consider when I'm making decisions as a board member, is how they impact the, the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood is important to me. And it's also the, the neighbor's reaction to anything that's changed or about to change is important to me as well. In that area of town, I'm very familiar with that Carlton Road area, that you can see anything there from a horse farm with different sheds, different structures, to a firework factory, different outbuildings and whatever else. The neighbors all have different sheds. However, we have to, I think, uphold the law here. And we have to go by the positive and negative criteria that our attorney mentioned, especially because there's an objector. So for me, it's very difficult to approve something that was already built. You, you held yourself out as a builder. As a builder, you should know this. It's not like, and I'm not lecturing you, I'm not passing judgment or anything. I'm just saying, as, as a property owner, we know our boundaries, especially if you're in the business, especially if you're in the real estate business or the building business. We know where our properties begin and end. And we are respectful of our neighbors. We don't go over our boundaries. And I'm not, again, not passing judgment on you or anyone else, but things happen. And it's how we deal with that. So, and it's not a punishment or anything like that if I don't approve your application. I'm not, I'm not even sure what I'm gonna do yet. But it's not anything punitive. It's just really what I think I'm following the law. And, and that's what I think I have to do here. It's very difficult. It's easier for me to approve something if there's no objection. And we can plant trees, and that does, it is, it does make the situation better than it was before, because trees, we all know, are very beneficial. And not only screening, but they absorb a lot of water, you have a lot of water in that area, we have a flood problem in our town. Trees are great. We, we need more of them, especially the spruce trees. They do grow fast. I think the screening will, will, will get there quickly. I have a lot of spruce trees on my property, probably over 50, and they grow fast, and they grow tall. However, I don't know if that's enough, considering what's gone on. Given your experience, given your abilities, it might be the right route. I'm not sure yet, but it might be the right route, is to start over and build a conforming structure that would accommodate all your needs, from storage to vehicles to heat and everything else that you need. So I'm not sure where I am right now. I'm sorry that I don't have a decision. It's very difficult.
We just deliberating.
Either way, it's very hard for me to come down, especially when it's neighbor against neighbor. That's something I hate to see that. And I hope that somehow it can be resolved, where you guys can be friends again.
Kerry?
I, I go back to some of the things that Mr. Warner advised, that we would be looking at this, not as if there's something there that was done without asking, more trying to look at it as if someone came to us with this application and said, I wanna build this shed here, and I wanna build this shed here. And we'd be like, well, there's two sheds, you know, why not just build one shed, one nice pole barn? And maybe it's not in that location, and maybe it's, the screening is then discussed and, and presented in a way that hasn't, that we have the opportunity to make adjustments or recommendations. We're kind of being forced here to saying, these things are here, so how can we, you know, say that they're okay, because we do have this, we do have that? You know, I don't necessarily think they're unattractive buildings, but I don't know that if they came before us and said, this is the way we wanna do this, that that's the way we'd be looking at, that we'd be looking at approving something like this. I also go to the C2, the positive criteria doesn't necessarily outweigh the negative, and, and that's where I'm probably hanging my hat on not supporting this.
Jessica?
Yeah, I, I won't belabor the point, because I agree with what the other board members say. Looking at it within the, the four corners of the C2 criteria, the positive and the negative, I don't think that that criteria is met, particularly because I do think that there is a way for you to come back and do this, the, you know, the right way that will fit more squarely within our zoning ordinances, which unfortunately is one of the, the downsides of doing something without, you know, following the proper procedure. But I think that lesson has been learned by many of us over and over again. So I will say that I am not in favor of the application without prejudice for you to come back with a, with a properly formulated plan under the, the zoning laws, and considering what can be done under our current laws.
Tom?
Well, thinking out loud, I appreciate counsel's advice here. Frankly, when, when I saw that these buildings were already existing, I thought to myself, this is a no-brainer, we have to say no. Counsel explained to me that's not a factor, so I got rid of that. Second issue was the, was the hunting shed, again, or shack, whatever it was. Again, no prior approval. Again, I thought that was a reason to say no. Counsel disabused me of that notion, so that's not a factor. I looked at, and thanks to the counsel, the core criteria, I think, I think actually they're okay, except for the one. I don't see any, any benefit or improvement to the, or advancement, I should say, of the zoning law by this proposal. So without meeting that criteria, I must vote no.
Okay.
As my fellow board members have said, this is not an easy one, as I thought it might be. And it's not only because of the objector, it is because of the nature and extent. As a board, we do sometimes have to take in consideration the neighborhood, but we don't wanna make the neighborhood more non-conforming than we have to. We wanna keep things as, as conforming or as pleasant for neighbors and the entire environment. I think there, the only detriment I can see that would be a C1 is that the wetlands and the position of these units, whatever these units might be, whether it be a pole barn or a shack, or a shed, or whatever, whatever size it might be, there might be some hardship on where it's positioned because of the wetland in the back. And you may not be able to put them as far back on the property or into the woods as someone else might be able to do if the property wasn't in a wetland area. So that is a type of a hardship when it comes to placement. But I, I did appreciate the photographs of both parties, and I looked at them very closely. I visited the property. I did not go on the other property and look at the view, but we do have the photographs that were taken rather. but we do have the photographs that were taken rather recently. And, you know, there is a view that you do see the back of that building. You do see a large structure. Uh, you do see two rather large structures next to each other. The, I, I don't see a benefit outweighing the negative because normally, um, for it to be a benefit that outweighed the negative, it would have to be something that would enhance the neighborhood or make the neighborhood better or make the property better or make the entire experience better for all the surrounding areas. This does not appear to do that in the sense that we've had testimony that, and we have photographs that show that it actually doesn't. Um, not to say that something can't be done that could possibly do that in another configuration and in slightly different location. So I, you know, it pains me to say this, but, you know, we don't very often do this. I would, I would not be in favor of it in the way it is now, uh, even with the conditions that we stated with more screening, um, only because of the fact that trees are fickle, some die, some don't grow as much, and they can't always be counted on to, to screen buildings of this size. Um, so with that said, it's a tough decision, but... So, uh, do you have a resolution to read?
Uh, well, based upon the deliberations, I think the proposed motion is a motion to deny. So there's no reason to reiterate the conditions of approval.
Okay, fine.
I'll make a motion to deny approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Aronia?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Hain?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Chairman, correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do you wanna explain to the, to the applicant? What exactly happened, so they understand?
Oh, that they're in violation.
Right.
It's unfortunate.
Right.
Just the board, yeah, there's nothing more for it.
The, the board just voted down what you have there now. You are free to change it, to amend, to, to vary it, to, to make it different and come back again with a different, with a different plan. Either to comply with it, and not in need of variance, or to do something different that you needed, a different kind of variance.
Are you saying tear it down?
That's...
It's not up to me. But right, right now, uh, right now, you're still in violation of the zoning ordinances of the township of Long Hill for those reasons. So, uh, I think it's probably best that you consult with the appropriate representatives of the township as to what your options are.
Yeah.
But again, and I'm not, oh, I'm an attorney, I'm not your attorney.
Nor are we the township.
Nor anyone else.
So...
We understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I'm sorry it didn't go that way.
Tim, you can come, you can have a conversation with me and we'll go over...
Obviously.
Oh, I think we learned. Yeah.
Um, you know, I, you know, we, we have to consider all the factors and, you know, and perhaps there is another avenue that you can take.
So anyone on that street that has all, all these...
We're not gonna concern ourselves with anybody.
We don't drive around looking for problems.
Yeah.
If they land here, then we have to deal with it.
Yeah. They land in front of us, we deal with it. You're welcome. All right.
Thank you.
Any other business before we adjourn? Thank you. Any other business before we adjourn?
Not that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, all right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we are adjourned at 10:04. All right.